Mayor, members of the council, we have three applicants who were in position vacated recently by the Iversons, living in Cave Creek. So, I wish to thank Mayor President Jerry Iverson for his service to the commission. The applicants that we have are Paul Elkman, who is not able to be with us. He emailed me and said he was stuck in Maui. Don't use that word. Also, Diana Grillow and Bruce McNeil. I have to look around to see if anybody else is present, but I'll turn it back to the council with the inquiries.
Understood. Okay, with the first of the applicants who is not stuck in Maui, I'd like to address your counsel.
Hi. I'm Diana Grillow. I live at 3695 East Glory Road. And I've actually had the pleasure of walking town with my family and looking at some ways that, some ideas that I had and they had, and about what would make the town of Cave Creek even better than it is. And I have to say, it's just a wonderful town. My husband and I have lived here since 98. We bought land, we built our home, we cut the road, and we named the road. So, when we walked around, I talked about some of the things that I thought were important. And that is that, it was mentioned once here tonight about sidewalks and safety issues when you walk into a town. Being able to get from one side of the town to the other side by walking rather than just getting into your car and having to drive would be wonderful. Having a wonderful lunch at Brian's, which we love, and then walking across the street and having rice, which is good. I'd like to be part of the zoning commission to help, to have, to bring fresh ideas and work hard to make this town a better place, a better town than it is. And so, just like to be considered. Thank you.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Ah, there.
The desert gold is certainly a little bit, pretty impressive business to follow up behind. I'm not going to call it an act, but it was quite a meeting tonight. Mayor, Town Council, and staff, my name is Bruce McNeil, and I thank you for this opportunity to present myself for application to serve on the town of Cave Creek Planning Commission. I have been a resident of Cave Creek since 1995, and I own a home here since 1998, right across the street. I believe that Cave Creek is a very special place to live. So special, in fact, that I'd like to spend the rest of my living life here. I feel like I'm at the top of the triangle. To the south is downtown Phoenix. West, I can go to the beach in San Diego. And east, I can go to Tucson, places towards the Gulf of Mexico. I believe that the growth of the town should be founded on well-conceived planning and be considerate for future generations. I also believe that sometime during one's residency here, there should be some type of civic service provided to the town. And I saw a lot of that tonight. Water board, museum people that were here earlier, very impressive. It is my desire to provide planning commission-related service to the town. Please know that my professional background includes experiences of being a fifth-generation Los Angeles, California contractor. Upon relocating to Arizona for multiple dozens of reasons, all of which were leaves Southern California due to wall-to-wall people, supervisory positions for homes built in the Baldur's, Legend Trails, and Cinquedados, a previous member position on the Cinquedados Architectural Plan Review Committee. I am currently engaged in my own business as a construction consultant to multiple insurance companies. I have worked and continue to work as a property insurance adjuster, first-party property. I have worked two major earthquakes, seven hurricanes, multiple large-scale hail events, and several catastrophic property wildfires. Of interesting note, I have family history that dates back to the early 1900s in the state of Arizona. My great-grandfather built the Hotel Western Ho downtown Phoenix. Del Webb beat out my grandfather on the contract, put a radio tower on top of that building. Del Webb and my grandfather got into pesty cups in the 1950s or '40s at the Los Angeles Country Club, resulting in both of them having an extended suspension from membership there. The hotel was completed in 1928 by my great-grandfather, Lawrence G. McNeil, and the stamp in the concrete, which is still there today, bears the name of J.V. McNeil Construction Company. That was his father. As we all know, prohibition was in full effect in 1928. However, there was no shortage of liquor at the hotel. But I came to learn that Cave Creek area with its year-round running stream was the go-to supplier for much of that liquor. And...
Mr. Williams, you care for that?
My first experience here in the summer of 1995, I actually met an old gentleman that I believe was still a moonshiner. And after my second shot of his craft and trade, I woke up 12 hours later, still sitting in the same chair that I started in. Gentlemen and staff, ladies, thank you for your consideration.
Does council have any questions?
Yes, I'm available for questions.
Councilman McGlynn.
Yeah, I think probably many of us have the, know that we have talked with and know Mr. Elkman, who has been active on the advisory, no, I'm sorry, Peter Hellman, on the...
Mr. Elkman currently serves the town as Board of Justice.
He's someone who has served the town, and it is unfortunate that he can't be here. I know he has expressed his regrets and believed that he didn't go to the United States tonight. He felt very badly about the timing of his coming forward with regard to this appointment.
Do you have your questions or the applicants? Okay, there is public comment. Okay, we will come back to council. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
If I may, this is for both of the applicants, and whoever wants to go first, you can do rock, paper, scissors or something. But the question is, how do you feel about higher-density development in the town of Cave Creek beyond desert rural zoning? Where, if anywhere, do you feel it's appropriate, and in what shape, form, and fashion?
You know, I think that the beauty and the uniqueness of Cave Creek is the desert and the open space. And so, I guess that I would say that by higher density, what do you really mean by that? And is it, is it something that's going to continue to be and look the way Cave Creek looks now and what, and not, I guess not destroy the beauty of the desert? Where I live especially, we're concerned about anybody that comes in and tears up the desert to, obviously they have to for the building, but there's real concern about keeping Cave Creek the way, the way it looks, keeping the desert and the beauty of it. And so, that's my concern. Any other questions about that?
Oh, thank you. When I moved here in 1995, I moved out of the city of Los Angeles that had a population five-something-umpteen million people. Within one week of living here, I quickly found out that I didn't need to walk my house or take the keys out of my ignition. I also quickly found out that deer during certain times of the year would actually walk through my backyard. The higher the density of housing we get, the more traffic we're going to get, the more congestion we're going to get, the more mandatory lighting we're going to get. And I believe it's going to take away from aspects of the general plan, and talk about low density. However, if we're in a situation where we have to have some type of poverty density somewhere, it better be well-conceived and highly considerate for ourselves as property owners who like to see their property values go up, and for future generations that are going to come in after us. So, at face value, Mr. Trent, to answer your question, I'd like to have a whole lot more circumstances of who, what, when, where, why, and how. But at face value, I'm opposed to high-density housing in this area. Thank you for your answer, both.
Additional questions from the council?
Yes, last question for both of you also. In the last year or two that you've been residents here, how often and how have you been participating in the planning commission meetings?
As I said before, I had been meeting in P.M. and B.M., and we walked around and talked about some ideas that I had. I actually did some drawings of that. I talked about a visit I made to Temecula, California, and how absolutely beautiful it was when we went into all the towns. And I think it's interesting, when I say to somebody, "I live in Cave Creek," they say, "Oh, I know Cave Creek," but they really are talking about the road, Cave Creek Road. And I really need to say, from now on, I live in the town of Cave Creek. And I think that it's very different. And when you talk about the town of Cave Creek, when you enter the town of Cave Creek, it's unique, it's special. And I think that when you enter it, it should be different than the road of Cave Creek. It should look different. And it does, in many ways. But I think it can be even more, look unique. In the old town of Temecula, they have particular ramps. When you walk, you drive in and you know you're in this, this old, beautiful town because they've got, everything changes, you know, from the road to the town, it changes. And I think that would be nice to see in Cave Creek, in my opinion. As, you know, you're not just on the road of Cave Creek, you're in the town of Cave Creek. You're in the historic town of Cave Creek. I think there's a beauty to that, all of the song.
Mr. Spitzer, to answer your question directly, I did not become involved with planning commission until we had initial hearings, which we got on the good side, initial hearings on the Surry Hills project, or no, I'm sorry, the...
Hidden Canyon.
Hidden Canyon, thank you. The Hidden Canyon project. I live across the street from the Wagon Wheel Restaurant and now the Body Shop. Also, during certain times of the day, it's downwind of the Body Shop. The alphabet houses went away, thankfully, because we no longer hear, "Come out with your hands up at 2:00 in the morning." That was great. New condos went in. Those looked like they were considerably, considerably conceived, well-conceived. The economy tanks, and we got another product in there, which I believe is not well-conceived and not considerably conceived. When I became aware of the Hidden Canyon project, that activated me. In addition to that, I am finding that I'm not going to be getting deployed hurricanes that be gone for six to 14 to 18 months at a time again anytime soon. So, why not get involved? I believe that as a resident, since my taxes that I pay on my property don't go to the town, there's a civic duty as somebody who likes this town, wants to stay in this town, would like to see his property values go up, you know, being, providing civic service to the town beyond the planning commission, volunteer.
Thank you. Additional questions from the council?
Hey, I have a question for both of you. I believe you both were present for the previous discussion. And in listening to the citizens on the Water Committee and the Utility Director and the needs to be done, in a world of magic, you wave the wand and they're done, but in the real world, you have to have money in order to carry out the goals that you're trying to attain. And one of the components to do that is to increase revenue, and that means economic development. So, I'd like to know or hear from both of you what you feel about economic development in the town of Cave Creek.
Well, I think it's very important. You have to have the resources to, to do the kinds of improvements that have to be done. This was very enlightening, actually, sitting here listening to the problems with the water. It's very, very important to everybody, to the businesses, to the residents of Cave Creek and... So, I think that we need to see that, we need to see development happen. And in fact, I was actually a participant at the community center over here. They asked a group of people who wanted to talk about, about what would make this community a better community. And there was about maybe 10 of us sitting around, getting, just throwing out ideas. It was an open meeting. And one of the things they talked about were, were wanting to have a place in town that they could actually have more stores, have more specialty stores, or small grocery stores, things like that, where they didn't have to drive. And I thought that was kind of interesting. On those, we talked about a senior center and things like that. So, just to make this community more of a community where you don't have to drive to Scottsdale all the time, if you don't want to. I think that's important, too. There has to be that mix of, you know, we have wonderful restaurants, and we have great places to go, and art galleries and everything, but some of the things that, other things, development that can be done, there's things that people need in the town. So, I think it's okay. I think it's good. Well-planned, it's good. And it increases the revenue, and hopefully, we will get this, the problems with the water and sewer fix, because it's very, very important. Thank you.
I do understand that development means development fees and a significant amount of money that will come to the town for those development fees. And like I said earlier, well-conceived plans and considerate for future generations, applying that philosophy to an economic development plan, applying it to a development plan, applying it to growth, which allows the town to realize and acquire those fees, we can, you can strike a balance between those two, excuse me, between those two. You can't be a no-growth person and just be a complete preservationist. Somebody asked me one, a long time ago, "Are you a, are you a preservationist when it comes to nature and land?" And I said, "No, I'm a conservationist," and that person had no idea what conservation meant. Preservation is you put a big chain-linked fence around it, and everybody gets to look at it, and you no longer get to drive on it, ride on it, horseback on it, fly over it. You can only look at it through a chain-linked fence. That's detrimental to a town. That's detrimental to income, that's detrimental to public use. Economic development, well-conceived, considerate for future generations, allowing revenue to come in. You can't strike a balance.
We'll go to public comment. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, we are back at council, and the procedure is simple, a name, a nomination, it doesn't require a second. And then, the first candidate to get four votes will move to the planning commission. Councilman Bunch. I'd like to nominate Mr. Bruce McNeil. Okay. Nominations are still open? Are there further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Diana Grillow.
Okay. Nominations are still open? Are there further nominations? I'd like to nominate Mr. Elkman. Okay, all three of the candidates have been nominated, so I will close nominations. And in order of nomination, we will, Mr. McNeil, give the call and roll, please. Carry it. We're voting on candidate, Mr. McNeil.
Councilman McGlynn?
We have three great candidates, but I am going to vote no.
Councilman Spitzer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilman Monacino?
Yes.
Councilman Durkin?
No.
Vice Mayor Frazier?
Yes, by vote of five to two. The, Mr. McNeil's going to the planning and zoning commission, so congratulations. Thank you, Mr. McNeil.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlynn.
Okay, proceeding. Council, two, General Number Four, Discussion, Private Office, Approve Resolution R. 2015-06, Optimizing the Year-Right to Keep the Public/Control Account Between Assurance and Town Level, The確定的保障和保證的確率，Subdivision of Public Improvement Development, A Hidden Rock at Cave Creek Subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this item is a reprisal of the item the council approved for the first phase of the development, when you approved the amendment to the final plan for three phases. This financial assurance as being presented to you in this resolution is for the second phase of the development. I'd like to bring to your attention that under Item A of the recitals on Page 78 of your packet, Page 1 of 19, it states that consisting of 35 town home units, it's actually 33, the engineer included two units within Phase 3 in his estimates, so the project was actually over estimated for. That number doesn't need to change, but for your purposes and for the clerk, and before we record this, if the council does approve it, it would be for 33 town homes. Mr. Elgood and his team are here tonight to answer any questions from you, and I can also answer any questions.
Well, I do want to give them the opportunity, the gentlemen are such a patient.
The mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers were actually wondering what we had done. So, you know, to be last, but it was just a joke on our end. We're not stuck in Maui. No, we're just here to answer any questions in reference to the Phase 2 financial assurance if you need us.
Additional questions? On the agreement? Councilman Spitzer.
In Section 8, it's in the Council Terminal of November 2nd, 2015, it's Page 4 of 19, it was Page 8. How is this date, how about, is it, do you expect it to be done, and what happens if you're not done by then, basically?
It's a... Your councilmen answer that maybe better than I can, but do we, we expect to be complete by then? Yes. This is a, this is a very gracious time for us.
Okay, any more questions?
What happens to it if we don't complete it?
If you don't complete it, that something happens.
Well, to my knowledge, it gets released to the town, and that, I probably called this with financial assurance.
Counselor?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, that is my understanding of the agreement, but I will also check that as the discussion proceeds, as I mentioned before, if these are drafted by the homeowners, very well, very, very technically the town.
To my knowledge, it reverts to the towns, to the town.
Okay. Second point, it was in Number 21, it deals with the warranty funds for a period of two years, and then dispersed back to developer in two years if not used. Is that a normal, is, any questions? Is it a normal time period for warranties of this type?
It is, in fact, Councilman Spitzer. So, they're placing an account for two years to address the maintenance of the system, so the town will have that money in place at the hands of the developers, so we can carry out any improvements. But ostensibly, the system will be put in and expected to meet our standards before we even accept it.
And I assume the HOA or whatever will assume warranty, the town isn't, isn't on the hook for the maintenance of the water system or the sprinkler system?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from the council? I think we have to state that the...
And it has to do with development, but not, it's not within the confines of this particular agreement. May I ask that question now, or...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, if it extended bears on your role, your ability to consider the agreement, I would say yes, but the, this is all the general...
If I may, I'll give you a call tomorrow. I do have a question for you. You reminded me by being here, and I was going to take the opportunity to ask it, please. Let him just put the question forward and let council, counselor, it's okay to, the council will correct it.
To the extent that that, that your property is completely fenced off for construction, a lot of that fencing is, or some of that, I shouldn't say a lot, but probably a very small portion of it, blocking the wash that parallels Cave Creek Road that gives equestrians access from Schoolhouse Road into Town Court at the Buffalo Ship and paddles? And if the water is absolutely necessary, would it be possible to adjust those fences so there's access in the wash, is my question? You don't have to answer it, legal counsel tells me, but...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I don't think a simple answer would solve that. I would say any discussion beyond that would be problematic.
We're pleased to look at it based on, of course, public safety, by all means.
Okay. It would be much appreciated. We took 27 riders out, let's put across wreck area from Pogs and Horses about a week and a half ago, and it's a logistical nightmare to get around that.
We're pleased to look at it, we take all of their safety into consideration, that's first, paramount to us, so as long as something is due to augment or mitigate, we're happy to address it.
Much appreciated, and thanks for developing our review.
It's our pleasure, it's all in our...
Any other questions from council, or any public comment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any public comment on this? Okay, let me bring the back to council, maybe, maybe a motion. Vice Mayor?
A motion to approve Resolution R. 2015-06, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, authorizing the mayor to execute a deposit control account agreement pursuant to the town subdivision code for the assurance of construction and public improvement facilitation development of Hidden Rock at Cave Creek subdivision.
Correct. Motion made, and second, Vice Mayor?
I have nothing further to add. Looking forward to a considerably-conceived development in our Town Court at a lower density than initially conceived. We do appreciate that.
If that stands without comment, anything else from council? Councilman Monacino?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, let me preface my remarks by saying that, gentlemen, I think it's a great project. Thank you for developing it in Cave Creek. Thank you for the $900,000. My comments go specifically to this agreement, and not to the government. We looked at this agreement last December, and I pointed out a number of things that concerned me. In my former life, I did escrows, okay? So, I know them more than I ever wanted to know. But this new agreement here for Phase 2 is nearly a carbon copy of one I objected to in December. I pointed out these inaccuracies, and they appear in the document again. That's, that's unfortunate. I also pointed out in December inconsistencies with regard to staff, and I specifically pointed out Section 7.2 of the subdivision ordinance. There are portions of that ordinance that impacted this agreement, and they are not part of this agreement. are not part of this agreement. The subdivision ordinance is incorporated by reference, but the specific portions of it, namely paragraph seven point two, is not included in here. So for these reasons, I'm not going to support this agreement.
Anything else from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Do. Let the record reflect that the vote is five to two, does council contest the mayor's calculation? The vote stands at five to two, thank you, council. On to agenda item number five, council discussion and authorization of emergency expenditures to foster electric company for a pump at a cost of up to thirty thousand dollars from the Rancho Mungana wastewater lift station. Uh, I put this on the mayor's, but I'm going to let you address it, uh, council consign.
That's fine, you're all gentlemen, Rancho Mungana again, we've had one of our wastewater pumps fail at Rancho Mungana, and we basically have a couple of options here, ask for thirty thousand to cover everything, continue, but we can go in and we can take the pump and standish and we can have it rebuilt. Typically, I don't recommend doing those things if the cost to rebuild something is upwards of above fifty percent of what a new one would cost. Uh, the new one is about twenty-two thousand and three hundred dollars, and so I'd recommended that we go ahead and purchase a new pump. I have a rather long lead time on this, and, um, we currently have only one pump working at Rancho Mungana, that leaves us in a very precarious position. I've instructed staff to hunt the countryside far and wide and see if we can find a pump that we can borrow, that several weeks it will take to get our new pump, if you so elect to, uh, moving that direction tonight, hopefully before the end of the week, we can get our hands on one. Councilman Bunch was willing enough today to assist me in the tracking of the pump, and we actually found a couple of pumps that are available by auction up in Sedona sometime tomorrow. I looked at the pump curves, they could work, we could purchase those for probably a relatively small amount of money, do a temporary fix, that could work, bypass the pump basically until we could get our, our correct new one purchased, so, that's why I've got a little bit of latitude here with the authorization now, so we can figure out what works best for us, so, that's what I have.
Okay, the pump that failed, uh, why did it fail, to stage or?
Um, it wasn't aged, the, these pumps typically have about a fifteen to twenty-year life expectancy, um, wastewater conditions are hard to work in, it's been there for about six and a quarter years, um, there's wear rings inside these pump impellers, and the wear ring wore out, and moisture from the wet well actually got up inside the motor, and more got water inside, shorted out, and we can catch these things with manual preventive maintenance.
Okay, that's my next question.
Yes, and we do have the tools to take care of this, with manual preventative maintenance.
Okay, I, I understand everything you are not saying. Any other questions from, uh, council, Monacino?
We just have one pump that's operating, worst case scenario, this pump goes down, then what happens to the sewage? Into the wash?
We have a couple of scenarios, so, Councilman Monacino, the sewage inevitably, until we catch it, would go into the wash, at a penalty cost of about fifty cents per gallon, for every gallon that's spilled from A to A Q, which can rapidly equate to.
Is a big, big number?
Over a hundred thousand dollars in a day, pretty rapid. As soon as we catch the situation, I've made arrangements with one of our local pumping, wastewater guys who works with us, and we could mobilize conceivably six pumper trucks to run around the clock, night and day, pumping wastewater out of the wet well, taking it down to the treatment plant, at a cost of a little over twenty thousand dollars per day. So, when we look at the cost of the pump, we look at the cost of the consequences, the consequences can far outweigh the situation that I have here. Fortunately, sleep is lacking, because from the operator's record, and this is very unknown, it's a little bit stressful, it's a bit difficult.
When is this auction taking place?
Uh, there's an auction on government surplus dot com tomorrow, up with Sedona, for these two pumps, they're up in Sedona, so, so it could be a good, good customer, especially.
Is this a, a unique pump in our system? We don't have any pumps that are, you know, this needs, uh, limits ninety feet of head at four hundred and fifty gallons per minute, roughly, these pumps in wastewater applications are signed very specifically for the flow you need to move and the pipeline diameter and the distance you have to move it, um, and so, there wouldn't be a, like a good idea to.
Standardize on a small set of pumps, so if we had one go out, we could let move one around.
It doesn't work too well in our particular situation. If we were more on flat ground, I would say we could have some flexibility there, but because of the hidden danger of our community, it's a little bit difficult.
Questions? Councilman Turner.
So, Mr. Prince, as the resolution or, or the approval reads, we are, we are authorizing expenditure to foster electric for up to thirty thousand dollars now.
Correct.
You and I discussed a couple of different options, right, with, one of which was to, well, I'll let you, yeah, let's investigate the options, I think council needs to hear.
One, one of the, the perfect situation in my world is an operating, would be to have two pumps in the wet well working absolutely properly, with a third pump sitting on a pallet that are ready to go. Councilman Durkin and I had a nice discussion tonight, and we've identified that if the future preventive maintenance program is working properly, we may not need that third pump, because we would catch these kind of problems long before they became emergency crisis problems. Again, we're still in this crisis management mode, we're trying to get out of that. So, another option we have versus purchasing a whole new pump is to take the pump we have, which has a bit shorter timeline to get repaired, and have that one repaired, and defer maybe to the future if we wanted to come back and purchase a, a new pump. So, I'm trying to leave it up to you guys to give me a little bit of direction, and I'm really like to go with this, and we can fix what we have for twelve to sixteen thousand dollars, or we go forward, we buy a new one for about, you know, over twenty-two thousand, we add tax and freight.
Carry on with the, the second step there, to that, to, they're pulling, pulling the one that's got six and a half years on it now.
Yeah, um, along the same vein, since we know both these pumps were put in roughly the same time, we've had one that's failing, we have to take all possible steps now to make sure the other one won't fail, so we need to test the other pump immediately, make sure we're not having the water inside the wiring, but as soon as we get this pump in the hole and get replaced, we'd like to come back and pull the other pump and go have it serviced, because these things are supposed to come out once a year to be serviced, and it's been in the ground for six and a half years almost, and so we're, we're kind of lucky to have gotten life out of this one, good. But, we, we should get a lot more life out of these, Bob Morris is absolutely right, if these things are looked at properly and regularly, this particular pump would be tested every single quarter, it would be pulled out of the ground once a year, we have an oil change, all these things would be done, we wouldn't be getting any situations, so, the plan is fix the one that's broken, after we get that back, go have the other one serviced before we have another catastrophe.
Why do I get the feeling you're going to be back to council?
It's always possible.
Why, why do you feel you're getting that feeling with this plan, Mr. Van?
Well, in listening to Mr. Prince, Sunday, the primed edition comes to me, the pump two is going to appear on our agenda sometimes.
No, no, that's part of the, can I speak?
Go ahead.
Since you and I did have a conversation.
Yeah.
I, I bet your dialogue. Okay, go share it. Yeah, so the, the plan is, and, and, and the benefit of this plan is, the, the fix cycle is a lot shorter than the buy a new pump cycle, right, downtime, so you fix a pump A, then at your convenience, but pretty soon, because of the, the fact that the other pump's been in the ground six and a half years, you pull that one out and overhaul it, and, and, and at that point, we are in the position where now we can employ our preventive maintenance program, and we get the reliability of two pumps, so, let me, let me make a case for you gentlemen for that one. I, this is sewage, which is lots of money, I bet my wife on two Magneto's, two sets of spark plugs, and two alternators in, on my airplane, but I only have two of them, okay, I don't have three of them, so, I, I, I'm, I'm making a pitch for this plan, the, the likelihood of simultaneous failures of a piece of equipment, to get the probability that that's going to, you multiply the probability that either one of them fails, okay, so if you get two small numbers and you multiply them together, you get a really small number, and, uh, I'm, I'm making a pitch for this second plan as being more cost effective and taking us to the first step to where we are getting our preventive maintenance program successful.
And we can save on gas when you fly and turn up to Sedona.
No, I mean, that was just, that was just a reference to, we all get a visceral feel of, I think, reliability when we, well, maybe you've never been at twelve thousand feet air in smaller places, I think about it when I'm up there.
That, that takes, the question was reliability of fixed motors.
I would say it's pretty good, you know, I've been around these wastewater pumps a long time, flights are a pretty reputable name, when they're in service and they're probably maintained, they get a long lifespan, and if, if our guys can't maintain this thing, and we pour out a hole, and you send you to James Cook and Hops, and they'll do the rebuild for us, with the wearings and bearings, and change the oil and all that.
So, so the rebuild is just as good as a, as a new one?
Pretty much, in this case, these are pretty tough pumps, um, I think where Councilman Durkin was going on this is, say we spend fifteen thousand to fix the one we have, and we spend another five thousand right after that to service the other pump we have, maybe three thousand, whatever magic number it is, we're still well below the thirty thousand authorization limit, and at that point, we've got two working, ready to roll pumps in the hole, and we can start monitoring these things on a regular basis, and try not to be in this situation again.
Councilman Bunch?
Did the, uh, linings go in and motor burn up when they got the moisture in it?
Um, I'm not sure, I don't have the complete report back, all they told me was what they thought the whole cost was. I, I think what's going on here is that we had moisture get in there, they went out to bake that piece of the motor again, and heard some discussion about that, but I don't know all the wherewithal, what they have to do on these complete rebuildings.
Now, is it fifteen horsepower, is it?
Mm-hmm. I can't remember what the horsepower was off the end, it, it may be fifteen horse.
And you're comfortable with Councilman Durkin's?
I'm absolutely comfortable with Councilman Durkin.
Any other questions from council? Tell Monacino.
Strike to foster electric, just leave it, urgency funding up to thirty thousand, that gives you your need.
When a time, time comes for that. Vice Mayor, question?
I was going to give a question.
Oh, publicly, I hope we're in the public? Okay, back to council.
Uh, motion to authorize an expenditure up to thirty thousand dollars for a pump needed at Rancho Mungana wastewater lift station and/or maintenance to existing pumps, uh, what the record reflected, I edited the motion that's printed in the agenda to give the utility director the, that.
Second. Motion made, and second, Vice Mayor Trump?
Just real briefly, I know it's late, but, with, with, Cave Creek's at a crossroads right now, uh, it's taken about a year of having a new permanent town manager and a new utilities director in service to identify the consequence of the willfully ignorant protocol that was followed in maintaining our utility and, and road infrastructure. Um, it is unfortunate that this community is facing a recall at a time when we're just starting to make these repairs, because I don't have any faith in the ability of, or the motives of those who are causing this disturbance in the, in our public service, uh, to pay attention to the nuanced complexities of these issues and to make sure that the town is going to run them appropriately and capitalize on a planning and, and investigation and, uh, that has occurred in the last twenty months, and I say that because two of the individuals sat up here and did nothing while fiddled while Rome burned for six years. Um, David, thank you for doing this, and I don't spend, take spending thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money lightly, I'm appalled that quarterly maintenance is called for on these pieces of equipment, and they sat in the ground for six years, or never maintained. I understand you've only been here for a year, you've been in triage mode since you got here, please get that preventive maintenance plan together for us, and let's, let's tackle what is a gargantuan amount of issues, uh, and give this town the level of service that it needs and sort of effectively manage our, our finances. Thank you.
Councilman Durkin, I believe, the second.
Oh, thank you, um, I just want to say, it is a real privilege to be able to work with these skilled, technical people and you dedicated gentlemen working through these problems to help our town move forward, that's all.
Councilman Stitzer?
Point one, we haven't given, as you said, a direction of whether to replace or repair, but you can, the option, but we can, can direction that, if there are more questions than that.
I would say whatever is most cost effective and, and fastest. I'm not, I'm not the expert.
That would be the repair, repair has a shorter.
Cost effective. Okay, cost effective.
Yeah, the, the repair has a shorter time, timeline, and time is of the essence in this case, I mean, I need to finish my evaluation on the Sedona pump tomorrow, I think there's two of them actually, if we can pick up those pumps for a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, that may be worthy, if they would work in a temporary situation for us, but we're still looking at probably about a four or five week beat to, to repair them all, we can maybe try to expedite that, but I'm more hopeful, I'd make some calls now.
I would have to defer you, but we need to be operating all of our wastewater treatment infrastructure up to a standard where we're not worried that we're going to lose hundreds of thousands of gallons of waste in the wash as a consequence of years of deferred maintenance, and so however we can most cost effectively fix that problem, I, I trust you to do that.
Councilman, um, as I derive what the best path is in the next day or so, day or two here, I can certainly send you out an email indicating what I think the best direction is and keep you guys followed up on this situation.
My, my personal opinion is that if we repair this one and then refurbish the second one, we'll have two practically brand new motors for less than the cost of buying one new one, and then we still have to worry about getting another new one down the road, or at least rebuilding this, this second one, any, any thinking?
Councilman McGuire?
I think it's very apparent that Councilman Durkin and Councilman Bunch have really facilitated what is happening in our collegiately with Mr. Prince, I think that's a, it's a model for our operation.
And, and, Councilman Monacino?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the previous administration had a very well-defined plan. The run to failure approach was quite successful. I'm going to support Councilman Durkin's synopsis.
This is financial, Senator Carrick.
Councilman Stitzer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Trump?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilman Monacino?
Yes.
Councilman Durkin?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Boy, I love knowing, I need to.
Yes, by a vote of seven to zero, motion, Carrie, thank you, council, thank you, John, and actually, Mr. Prince, last of the agenda, item six, council discussion and approval of the town Cave Creek Water Service Adjustment Policy.
Unless you can, council, um, you just passed this, uh, policy back in, um, it's been a couple of months now, um, so I have two small minor adjustments under section four, changing conditions, um, we have one month, so we're allowed to give relief, we're asking, asked for two months, what happened, he fell on the twentieth, someone has a leak, by the time that find it. it and we correct it, sometimes we've gone in for a second month, so it's really trying to be fair to the customers to give them relief for two months. Really, you weeks, a leak will happen, but no one sees it for two months, they usually see it the next month. So I was asking for that, and I was asking for on section six, I don't have it down here, but to modify the effective date back to December two thousand fourteen. This is, we noticed we have a number of folks with these type of leaks, it's just taking some time to them.
To December two fourteen?
December two thousand fourteen.
Okay. Any questions from Council on this? Mayor? Yes, Councilman Monacino?
Town manager, this is water that the town has paid for and delivered to the customers.
True, true.
Okay. The surface areas that we plan to implement this or continue, desert hills, carefree?
It's all our customers and both of them. Everyone's allowed a one-time adjustment for something that's abnormal, it's usually a break in the line.
Where are we going from one month to two months?
Because sometimes we go on the twentieth, and sometimes there's a break in the lines, whatever happens, and by the time that people realize it, it's just go from one month to two months. Sometimes you can't tell there's a break in the ground, so for the next meter reading, it shows definitely how it's, it spans two months. So we thought out of fairness to those folks, not penalizing, that it would be worth an effort to give them a credit for both those months that are abnormal use.
Okay, section three D. Under what conditions would the finance director deny the request?
I assume he thinks someone's fraud, for example, someone has a garden hose and they're running it to their neighbor's property for some purpose and trying to, I mean, I haven't actively thought about how to defraud the system, that's one of the systems, that's one of the thoughts I could think of.
In the past-
I just had trouble understanding, how would he know? How would he make that into-
He would ask through the town engineer, send out our staff, Dennis Charles and his group, and they would go look at the break and see if manufactured, you know, if it is an honest break, what have you. Usually, field staff comes into us, someone would complain, someone would give us a complaint that their bill is abnormally high, we send out field staff, field staff will look at the situation. Nine times out of ten, they'll find it's a break or something, maybe it's the meter itself, I don't know, and then we, they contact their local plumber to fix it, all we fix it ourselves if it's on our side of the meter.
This applies both to residential and commercial accounts?
Correct. It's been a policy of the town for about an hour.
Okay. We're changing the date to December, is that how far back somebody can go?
I only have two, this has arisen out in the last couple of months, two folks going from December to January, so since they brought it up, I thought it was fair to give them this chance because-
I had a leak in twenty thirteen.
I'm only going back to December two thousand fourteen.
Okay, okay, yeah. The commercial accounts, maybe it's included in the one-time relief if applicable?
They all, not all of them are on our sewer system.
So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, public comment on the tab, item number six. Council, Vice Mayor, turn.
Motion to approve the town's Cape Creek Water Adjustment Service Policy.
Second. Motion made, or second, Vice Mayor?
I wanted to make this motion just because I wanted to speak out against it first. I, when this was first on our agenda the last time, I was beside myself. I don't think it should be coming upon the taxpayer to ensure utility users against one-time or however many time catastrophic events to their water service. To me, this comes down to personal responsibility. We are responsible for the water from the time it runs through the meter at the street until it gets to our house, and if you have a leak, you notice it on your bill. I'm all for the town making provision for a payment plan, if it's an excessive bill, you can pay it off in installments, but to forgive it, I think it sends the wrong message, and I will absolutely not support it as I did not on the first reading before we went, when it was only contemplating one month, now it's contemplating two months, I think that's absurd.
Councilman Bunch, you have the second.
Yeah, I proved myself to conservative with a heart last time around because I did support this. We're not giving anything away, we're just charging at the high, at the lower rate for the volume they're using, is that, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So if something bad happens, it's not giving anything away, it's, they've become a major user and they're getting the benefit of that lower rate until you get it fixed. They don't fix it, and they go right back to it, because things happen to people. Under-slab waves you might not know about, you know, there's, there's a lot of things can happen through the fault of people's own, and I think this is the compassionate thing to do.
Anything else? Councilman Monacino?
I didn't support this the last time, but if I can echo the Vice Mayor's concerns, just let me recap here. The town paid for the water, okay? Now somebody who's on vacation or neglect or through no fault of their own, bar their system, breaks and excess water, and I'm trying to reconcile, why is the town now compelled, okay, to get involved here? I campaigned, and I'm still campaigning today, on smaller government, okay? Why is the government the answer to problems in life? Somebody lives in a two-million-dollar home and the pool pump breaks. Government is now obligated or government feels responsible to correct that? I can't see that.
Is that what this is saying?
Yes, it is. This is, I'll re-categorize it for myself, it's another step in the welfare program. We already have a welfare program, this is another part of it, it's just welfare creep, okay? Besides, they'll define under what conditions we, whatever the finance director thinks. Anyway, gentlemen, for me, it's another phase of welfare I can't support.
I'm trying to preface my comments to you gentlemen. Would you, clarification?
Yes, sir.
If something breaks and a customer that used five thousand gallons last month uses twenty-five thousand gallons the next month, they pay as if they use twenty-five thousand gallons, and we have a rate for a consumer of that capacity, is that correct?
Right, they would get paid, they would pay a lower rate.
We don't forgive anything, we just charge them at a rate that we would charge a restaurant that used twenty-five thousand gallons, is that a true statement?
If it was twenty-five thousand, the first ten thousand gallons at three twenty-five, the second ten thousand gallons around four dollars and fifty cents, and the remaining five thousand in this scenario would be at five dollars and seventy-five cents, seventy-five cents. Under the policy, one time, they would be all charged at the three point two five, so they would still be charged, they're just at the very low rate. If that happened, once it give a relief, if that happens again, they're responsible for everything.
Okay, so we are, we are forgiving something. Because a restaurant user who used twenty-five thousand gallons would be, would pay, you know, the four dollars or-
Correct.
Thank you, then my gentleman, I have to agree with the Vice Mayor, if, if, yeah. Let's put it to the vote, Carrie.
Vice Mayor, turn.
No.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilman Monacino?
No.
Councilman Durkin?
No.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Stitzer?
I'm staying.
New Francis?
The mayor's voting yes on this, which deadlocks the vote. Is, are abstaining, Councilman? The council's, but yes.
The motion failed. The motion failed, that's the one. We still have the policy, we just didn't update it.
Right. Is there any other motion on the floor, since the motion has failed? Is it coming upon the chair to ask, is there another motion on the floor? It's arisen, it's another one, that's fine. No.
At the risk of being a little aggressive, I would make a motion to repeal the policy that was approved a couple of months ago.
It's not adjudicated, you can't do that.
Okay, the motion deadlocks, and that's the agenda, number six. Thank you. A motion to adjourn. So- I'll sell it, sir. The last one was four to one. Three, three in the state.